Vice Mayor Fish, allegiance and pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for another beautiful day in Goddard, Kansas. I just pray that you would bless this time, God, that we would feel your presence, just fill this space as we meet tonight, Lord. Guide us and direct us as we make decisions that impact not only the Goddard of today, but the Goddard of the future, Lord. We just pray this and all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Before we approve the agenda this evening, I just want to take a moment to thank Councilman Brett Trayler for his generous donation of countertops to our community center. And he did put in some cheapy thing that he put in for me. He did the nice stuff. And I really appreciate him doing that, and I think he deserves a round of applause. So, thank you. Okay, moving here. I seek a motion to approve the agenda.
So, I would actually like to make a motion to add an item to the agenda to discuss the situation with the DAMJAM Music Festival and everything that's unfolded in the last few weeks.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah. Okay. Now I'll seek a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Keep motions. Audrey, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on. Citizen comments. Is there an opportunity to speak in council this evening?
Sorry, it's habit. I'm just assuming.
I know. Keaton looked at me, so I'm coming to talk now. I was looking at the, sorry, Jeffrey Gims, 1069, are they approved for? I was looking at the agenda items and noticed that one of the items will be discussing the apartments on 199 or the possibility of. This 199 has been a concern of mine for a bit. And it seems the longer we go, the more we are adding to that street. We already kind of have an ad hoc entrance into the softball fields now. We're getting ready to put in GS, our six S or pickleball stuff. If we add these apartments, that's just driving more and more traffic there. The last time I was pulled over by our lovely Men in Blue, I was informed that 199 is the busiest street in town. Also, it appears to be the narrowest street in town. We start adding traffic trying to get in and out of the Starbond area, we're screwed. Traffic has been backed up beyond reason. So, another challenge. We've got to figure something out, folks. I know easements in the city is a big concern. My only thought is to go east of that. There's less land to be purchased, less homes to invade. Building, I don't know. You've got people who do that. But we've got to figure something out before it gets stupid crazy and we have major bad issues with that. Thanks.
Amanda Treadwell, for Dan Richards Road. To come before you as assistant and also as just a community member, just to add a bit to the agenda, to speak on behalf of that DAMJAM. I can tell you, I have spent many hours and all the effort in trying to talk to the commissioners and sent a very, very long email and tried to schedule appointments with them so that way we can express to them the importance of DAMJAM to our community. And just my personal experience working with the DAMJAM and what they've been able to bring to our community as far as volunteering in our community, volunteering in Wichita, and just understanding what that, what DAMJAM has put on DAMJAM and what the benefits are of being able to have that. Talking to organizers of the DAMJAM, they're making their efforts and trying to work with Central County. I've tried on my side, working in Central County, and I really would ask that whatever efforts that our city can do to try to help support the DAMJAM and try to keep the DAMJAM here at the Gaffin is going to be a big benefit. If we lose that, I think it's going to be a big hurt on us, our economy and what that could bring from having possibly nine thousand people to come into our community, staying at our hotels, eating at food, shopping at our Walmarts, and so forth, and just what that organization wants to do and the goal to do to help our community. I do know that other people are reaching out to them, saying, "We'd love them to come to their cities." And I really think this is a big opportunity for us not to lose that. So, whatever power our city government has or resources that we have available, I would just ask that we stop all of those and try to help save the DAMJAM and make sure that we can keep it here at the Gaffin or Bridge and Underwater so we don't lose that opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Commander. Anyone else? Just fine evening. All right. We'll move on here. Next item is, this time I'd like to give the City Council a chance to declare any conflict or communication they've had that might influence their ability to consider any of today's agenda items in partnership. Hearing none, we'll move on. Questions and compilations. Mike out. Community Development Director, Senator State.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, I have had one, this is to appoint Jim Milligan to the City Council. Quick background, the Plenary Commission operates on a three-year term basis with one veteran Plenary Commissioner being reappointed each year. The mayor appoints the commissioners to office and they are confirmed by the governing body. Shane Grayke has stepped down from the Plenary Commission after fifteen years of service and his seat needs to be filled. Shane was reappointed on November first of 2021 to serve another three-year term ending in December of 2024. Jim Milligan has stepped forward to request the appointment to the Plenary Commission. Community Development Director, me and myself, City Administrator, the mayor, I met with Mr. Milligan. It is the mayor's recommendation that the City Council appoint Mr. Milligan to the Plenary Commission. Jim Milligan lives within the city limits. He's an apartment of the Plenary Commission bylaws. City staff has asked the City Council to both approve the appointment of Mr. Milligan with Shane Grayke for the remainder of the year and also to reappoint him to another three-year term beginning in 2025 because either you can appoint him now and then reappoint him in December, or you can appoint him now and reappoint him now. So, it's just whatever you prefer. These are the Plenary Commission bylaws. Community Council, our first regular meeting, annual appointment of commissioners, which will be first in council in December. Commissioners appointed by the mayor are confirmed by the City Council for a term of three calendar years on a staggered basis and approximately one veteran Commissioner is reappointed each year. Financial unidisciplines proved as the form. It is recognized that the City Council approved the mayor's decision to appoint the Plenary Commission, renew the three-year terms of Jim Milligan. And, you know, he's here. There he is. You want to stand up? He recognized? There he is. Seems trustworthy, so. Do you guys have any questions for Mr. Milligan? He is present. If you have any questions for myself, the City Administrator, or the mayor, what we ask at this time.
I just think we're really fortunate to find someone with seventeen years of experience in engineering and that background to serve in that capacity. So excited to see him being willing to serve in this capacity.
Jim, just for background, Jim came to council at the beginning of last year with some concerns about some stuff in the city, and so, been very active, not only in that, but also at different events. I constantly see him and his family at Main Street Markets and different events. So, love seeing that not only is Jim just outstanding in his career, but is an outstanding member of the community, and I think we need more of that. So, I make a motion that we approve the mayor's decision to appoint Jim Milligan to the Plenary Commission and renew the three-year terms.
Keep moves. Krista Seconds, approve the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those in favor.
Thank you very much.
Hold on. Would you please introduce our new staff person?
I will, with pleasure. Kina may stand up. There she is. How? She is joining the city. She's a City Planner One. That's her official title. She'll be Sarah Member myself. Kina comes with us from PEC, but she's got a mechanical engineering background, and she's got extensive knowledge working in the field, both in an engineering capacity and a former engineering capacity, but under the same kind of per view. And we are happy to steal her away from PEC, and we're happy to utilize her immediately. She's really going to be assisting us with stormwater management, with managing the act of construction that we have throughout the city. As you know, we are growing, and that requires a lot of onsite review. And so, Kina's really going to be helping us out in that capacity. She hit the ground running immediately, and so, we're really happy to have her. And so, Kina, at this point, do you have anything you want to say or add to that?
I just want to say thank you. We're really happy to be in Goddard. I think we have a great team. I'm happy to be invited on this team. And I think we've got a really good environment on the side of the city.
Local aboard.
Thank you.
Great to have you here.
I will treat her well, I promise. Thank you.
Okay, moving on down the list here. I have a G consent agenda. If everyone's had a chance to look through those items. I entertain a motion for approval. Second. Brett, motions. Audrey, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye's habit. No unfinished business, so. We move on to new business. Vice Director Wong.
I was going to introduce our city auditor Randy Ford, but he's taken that on himself, so.
So, Randy, consider yourself introducing. Thank you for being here.
All right, thank you. So, what you have before you is the 2022 audit. It's a little later than normal. The man said, "It delays not with the conducting the audit, finding the time to do the audit." Just got to leave it. Normally, this is done May or June times, right? So, I said, "The discipline delays that weren't expected in how it worked out." So, I will say that it didn't affect the audit. So, you'll flip to the third page, which is on our letterhead. You'll see right in the middle, there are two opinions. Because this financial statement is publicly available, you issued debt, we have to say in that very, in the second paragraph of the report, that you do not follow the general except for the accounting principles. There's an assumption that a financial statement that's been audited does. Because you don't, we have to say that. I conduct about sixty government audits a year. None of them follow GAAP. Most of the entities that follow the GAAP are based on cash basis and budget loss. So, the third paragraph then says, "We did conduct our audit accordingly, and we issued an unmodified opinion," which is good for people. Can't say that it's perfect. We go through the transaction. We make the analysis, calculate the risk, those types of things. But this is what people often refer to as a clean opinion. The way I said, "This is really a good opinion." And also, I will say, as far as doing the audit, I didn't have to make any adjustments. So, the numbers you see in here were the number that I was given. The numbers I've given, the major detail, but it's a little summarized in the report. Then after that, it kind of explains those differences of opinions. On page number two, it says, "You, the city, is responsible for your accounting and reporting." Then it says, "I'm responsible for doing the audit." On the bottom of two over three, this had a high little kind of explain a little bit what we do. Like I said, we consider risks. We get an understanding internal for the whole, so we conduct our audit accordingly. And then it also says, after that, there's some supplementary information that supports the financial statement, but the audit is on the financial statement. And that's on page number five. So, your financial statement is merely a summary of your activity for the year, beginning, received expenditures, any unencumbered cash. That's the key column. A negative in that column indicates a cash basis violation. You'll see your funds are all positive or zero, so there are no violations. Also, something to note, it says at the top, it says, "City Goddard Financial Reporting Unit." What that means is, in addition to the city's basic books, there's also a separate entity, which is the library. So, that's included in the audit. We're not auditing the library, but it's part of the audit, and there is a difference. But auditing the library, we do extensively more work on that. This is included like the word of the document. So, when you look at, we perform analysis, but it's not audited, that's everywhere. But it also is part of that opinion. So, then after that are the notes. The notes are really intended for third-party users. Explain, based on what the city Goddard is, including the public library, the various funds that you've used. On page seven, some information. Once again, a very summary level related to the budget tax cycle. Page eight, more information regarding the various funds. There was one budget violation at the bottom of page eight. So, the money that you receive, tax money you receive to the library, comes into the city and you pass it on to them. And kind of the practice is, you just money send it to them. Well, this year, you collect a little more than you expected, so your December payment, which was made at the end of the year, puts you over budget. Wasn't anything technically illegal. You just collected a little more than you expected, so that extra payment became a budget violation. Probably not an issue. I see that routinely. It's just one thing. You just got time to get in the habit of both the cash and the budget balance. Small now, nothing. I'm going on. Page nine, information related to papers. As far as what you pay, as well as your share of under liability. Then because of the timing of the audit, on page ten, there's subsequent events. So, when something occurs significant after the end of the financial statement in this case, December thirty first, twenty-two, that has to be disclosed. In this case, you issued quite a bit of debt from that time period. So, that's in that note on page, note number seven on page two. Then after that, information on deposits, money you tell the bank. So, when we do the audit, we'll look throughout the year as well as that year in to make sure that all your funds are covered by either FDIC, served, or collateral. We're sustaining that, income costing violations in that area. Transfers on page twelve, just some more general disclosures on page thirteen related to debt. And then your debt starts on page fourteen, so there's a summary of all the debt, summary of activities, and then a debt service schedule for five years and five-year increments after that. Currently, your final debt payment is being twenty-four-three. So, that was the change that you issued on just the city developments. So, then after that is what's called the supplementary information. On page sixteen is the schedule of divestiture compliance to the budget law. Shows the budget, the credit you might have. Full budget, various expenditures are right. A negative number is under budget. A positive number indicates violation. We're sustaining that library violation, one thousand eight hundred and forty-three. This next part, I won't go through in detail. It's just each individual fund with a little more detail based on the function showed in the budget. So, it starts with the various budget funds, general funds, street and highway, those types of funds that you have to publish a budget where it's extended funds. And if you go back in the report a little bit, you'll come to the non-budgeted funds, which are funds that are restricted for a specific purpose. Those are on page thirty, maybe like capital projects, reserve funds, the library, those types of things. Then your report has some additional information that about three or four years ago, Matt requested be included. So, if you go to page thirty-two, there's just a little more analysis. It just kind of shows different things over basically five years. Starts with unencumbered cash, the changes in unencumbered cash, and all that you guys went through that at your own time. That's unusual. Most, like, you're the only audit that I do if you guys do that. Like I said, it just adds a little more information on just, you know, this is what happened in the previous period. And I think it's actually written, so. So, that's really the audit. My hand is out of two pages summary. Basically, this is where I say that when I did the audit, I didn't have any findings. There were no difficulties. Matt is great to work with. Anything that I requested, I get on a timely basis. Certainly, I'm looking forward to make those, and so, there were no issues or problems because I did an audit, so. It's a somewhat quick overview.
Very good. Any questions? Greg, you're kind of a muddy guy every day. I spent a little time looking at it Saturday.
I figured you did.
No, it's very detailed and very well done. Appreciate the work. I maintain a motion to accept the audit.
I make a motion to accept the audit.
Chris, the motion. Second. Further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
This on? Testing one, two. You guys hear me all right? Yep. Just want to make sure. I think it's on earlier. So, Honorable Mayor and City Council, I have the distinct pleasure to welcome our members of the Lions Club, a couple of folks from their executive team here. We have Amanda Treadwell, and of course, a staple, Dan Funky, here to represent the club. Before I turn it over to Amanda, real quick, one of the things I always like to note when we have our civic groups here is that these civic groups often are doing a lot of different tasks where the city can't be. They're serving a lot of very, very important purposes in our community. I know the Lions Club mission, it involves lots of different service activities, the things that we'd like to do with our local government staff, but we don't have the time, resources, or the knowledge and expertise to do it. So, Amanda, with the help of Dan, likely, is going to share some updates on the activities that the Lions Club's completed and will be completing this year, as well as some conversations about the annual funding allocation from the city. Amanda?
All right. I put together a presentation. For council members that have been present for past presentations, they ran thirty minutes and twenty-five minutes, so I'm going to try to sit to ten. So, I revamped the presentation that they get faster. So, you can go to the next one. Okay, so, we're at Lions Club. I'm the president, Amanda Treadwell. The community service organization that we've ordered in our community since nineteen fifty-six, so we're celebrating our sixty-eighth year in May. So, that's exciting. We're the largest service organization in the world with one point four million members in two hundred and ten countries. Our Lions Club has grown to fifty-seven members, fourteen new members since July of two thousand twenty-three. Lion David Curtis will celebrate his forty-fifth year serving Goddard as a lion and a, um, an interroper, a lion in our organization here in Goddard. So, that's pretty great to recognize. And our fiscal year or our calendar year goes from July to June. So, it's a little bit different financing-wise and for our finances and budget. So, we did kind of pull from the whole year, from January to December. But last, in 2023, we did spend over thirty-one thousand dollars back into the community of our raised funds. Not including any donated funds or partnerships or anything that we had. That was thirty-one thousand of the funds that we've raised in the community through our fundraisers. We've done over twenty club service projects each year, and then can't even really count the thousands of hours of volunteer hours that our members do. All of our members work very hard in the community, and it's all volunteer, not paid at all. So, our mission in our, our mission is to be a global leader in community and humanitarian service. Our mission is to empower volunteers to serve their communities meeting humanitarian needs and encourage teams to promote international engagement of Lions Club. So, we serve is our motto and whether the need is a lion. Our goal is to try to meet any needs that our community has. We do have our global causes, diabetes, environment, hunger, vision, cancer, disaster, humanitarian support in youth. But we also have your clever way to where if there's a need in our community that doesn't fit in one of those categories, we can serve that in whatever it may be. Hunger, you'll see that a lot of the things that you guys have probably seen, Bitten Tree, our food drive, Widow, Senior Fruit Basket, Community Thanksgiving feast. Four blessing boxes now, because our blessing box in one of the, the General Parks House inspired them to create their own community closet and pantry. So, they are going to be doing their own now, which is awesome. And then the Goddard Food Cantry, what the Goddard Church. Vision, we do free vision screenings. We also do the gift of sites. So, we give away free solar glasses for the solar eclipses that are coming up to protect their eyes, and we have free eyestamps and glasses. And then also, we take, we recycle glasses. If anybody has old glasses, they can take it to the library and recycle those and we send other good ones. We have to restore them. And we do partner with Goddard Library, and then once it's shopping, we off, and off topic. We also do the Kansas State Fair, and then we do vision screenings for them as well. Environment, plastic recycling for benches. So, if you've seen some benches at the library and at some of the schools, those benches were, were came from recycled plastics. You see five hundred pounds recycled plastic. They just increased that to a thousand pounds. So, we are now saving for a thousand pounds to get an event. And we're working with CBS currently with their nature center to provide benches for them, and they're stocking plastic as well. Those donations can be taken to the public library as well. Neighbor United, we're pretty big in Neighbor United in supporting that and in the community garden and relocation and the new garden that we're getting ready for. We've also planted trees and watering, have pocket parks, we restore wet filters, and then we do a community-wide rock sale more, setting include the environment. Youth, we do scholarships, Lion State Band scholarships as well. This is something that has, is pretty big for us, is every year, any new teachers to the district, we give them a hundred dollars for them to spend on anything they want to get their classrooms ready. So, we had sixty-two new teachers this year, so sixty-two hundred dollars this year went to our teachers. And we like to support our school district, our teachers, let's support our youth. The Goddard Public Library, William Allen White House, and we support the Facebook bill. Additional projects with school supplies. We do mentoring lunches in Reality U with our academy. We partner with Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts as well. Diabetes, disaster and toxic cancer. We do have a Kansas Lions Disaster Alert Team, so we have that trailer. So, if there is a disaster, we have access to ten thousand dollars worth of funds as well as we have this trailer that we can service our area and within Kansas as well. The diabetes student crash kits, this is a partnership with the Better Women's Club. We provided diabetes crash kits in all of the schools for any of the students that have diabetes. And then the Goddard Leo Club is our youth club that gets them already for service projects and for volunteering in our community. That's ages twelve to eighteen, and that's, they make jackets for our youth cancer patients. Mediterranean support, early program with Goddard Bitten Tree. So, for Goddard Bitten Tree, we have three hundred and forty kids this year. And then we had, so, if you look at how much money that is, a general on average kid is about hundred fifty, hundred seventy-five, sometimes two hundred sitting up as an older kid. So, you're looking at that, so we're fifty thousand dollars worth of support that we give into our community with the help of donations and support. And then food for a hundred and thirty-five families, but that's how many people that we support. This is a lower year compared to previous years. And then we had a hundred and forty fruit baskets and senior, Widow and Senior Fruit Basket, and we hand-delivered all of those to the community. And then we also have our free durable medical equipment closet that's at the library, so anybody can check out any of that equipment at no cost. This is with our library partners. We partner with the library on that. I might get off then. Community partnerships. So, this is really what I like about this. Part of my passion is, you know, let's do all of this together. We all serve, and the more we partner, the more we can help more people and just come together as a community. So, this is something I was really excited about to show, with all the different partnerships that we do. We work with the Women's Club, the School District, Goddard Church, Boy Scouts, Goddard Chamber of Commerce, Public Library, and then of course, the video of Goddard. And that's just about all. That's not everybody. We also participate in all of the other community events that there are with Neighbor United, Goddard National Night Out, Main Street Market. We try to be present in all those events and support, whether it be sponsorships or with volunteer work or part of the planning. So, newer twenty twenty, like slash three, four, we started what's up Goddard in partnership with the Guard Chamber. That's to provide everybody with a very positive Facebook page so where we can really highlight our businesses and focus on keeping to where we can really highlight our businesses and focus on keeping, um, communication out with our community. Um, and we have grown that to be twenty-four hundred, um, followers on that page already. And so far, that's going really well, um, and it's staying very positive. Um, we keep that pretty central to Goddard businesses and, um, and anything that's, you know, Goddard history. Um, then we also started in two thousand twenty-four, the Goddard Hub. Um, the inspiration for that was just to bring all of the service organizations together. We were finding through mint tree and other things that we were buying a whole bunch of turkeys, and the Goddard Church was buying a whole bunch of turkeys, and we were all helping these families. But kind of find out, there's a lot of families that were overlapping in the two programs. So this allows us to all work together, come together, and if we're all serving Goddard, so out of all of us, we can meet every quarter. Um, our next meeting is April seventeenth. Um, we get together, talk about all the needs in the community, and through that, we come up with solutions. And that way, if the Women's Club and the Lions Club want to partner, or the churches want to partner, we can all work together to address the needs. And it doesn't have to feel like it's things beyond one specific, you know, group first or not. So through that, um, we're having discussions around mills on wheels, um, having discussions around, you know, other type of big, big projects and stuff that we need to address in the city. Um, Easter egg hunt, um, so if anybody says that Easter egg hunt, it was very big last year. Um, it was in combination with our car show. Um, it just happened to fall on it for that, that time period. Um, in the future, we don't think that's going to happen. So it is really becoming a standalone event. Um, so we, um, that's why we've reserved the allocation for that. So here's some of the pictures from last year, Easter egg hunt. Um, our Goddard Independence Day celebration, so that's with fireworks, we have entertainment, and then we have food. Um, we had a thousand hot dogs, and we ran out probably within first thirty to forty-five minutes. Um, so definitely need to increase, increase the amount of food that we have. Um, and then our Thanksgiving dinner, um, we serve a lot of people for that. Um, and this is a big partnership with the schools, uh, Women's Club, and a lot of people often together for this, to serve this meal. So fundraisers, our fireworks, our Larry Memorial Car Show, bingo, our placement absols and our pancake feeds. Um, that probably raised the money to pay for all of this. And so the Goddard Lions Club, in writing before you the two thousand twenty-four allocation request, is the asset you continue to, um, partner with us and offer these three events and increase our funding from, um, the previous year, twelve dollars, which is over thirteen thousand five hundred, which is a fifteen hundred dollar increase, and that's the breakup over there, um, just for the cost of food. And then specifically for the Easter egg hunt, because we had twenty-four hundred eggs last year, and it wasn't enough, we had way too many kids. So, um, definitely more eggs, and with it being a standalone event, if we want to have househouses or anything else besides just the egg hunt, then we need to increase that funding for that. Any questions?
I guess one of my only questions is in regards to the increase for the Easter egg hunt. It was insane last year. Do you guys think that you will still see that amount of people without the car show? Like, I, I guess, how was it prior to the car show being at the same time? You know, compared to now, without the car show, do you expect to have that same turnout?
Um, I think we will have a prediction, I don't think we'll have as many, but the cars has more driven around older, cities that have families, we have househouses and stuff. But, um, this was by far a lot more participation than we've seen before. So, um, it, I don't know how, how it is.
But you don't anticipate it impacting it exponentially?
I don't expect it to, um, by going back to discovery, we can actually separate the kids in fields instead of, because whoever had it, he could separate it, and one, one group went, the other group, nothing.
Oh, yeah, it was chaos.
It was chaos.
So those, so moving into the ball field is going to help keep the ball field organized, and it's not going to stretch that so thin, because we have the car show going out at the same time.
For sure.
So it'll be better as a, as a separate event, but I do think it will have a big, um, turnout, because I've not seen anything from any of the other organizations having anything. Um, and it doesn't, that, it's March twenty-third, so it doesn't fall on the same date as like Central County and other events happening. So it does give our community the opportunity to choose our event over, like, other people's, um, Easter egg hunts.
When's the, sorry, when's the car show?
April sixth.
Ooh, do you remember that conversation we had a few weeks ago about me not being able to?
Yes.
Never met, I have the dates booked.
Okay. Works my day.
I'm so glad we had this talk.
So the funds from last year only cover the eggs, and it covers the prizes, so we get like golden eggs. So if, if we keep with that, then that's all we're going to have. And I don't, for the standalone event, you're going to want to have something else that's like just the egg hunt and.
Chicken bar.
And we did get feedback at the, the selfie cameras, that they would like to have a professional photographer there, kind of like to do some of the other events. Yeah, for Easter bunny. So upgrading to, to, you know, have something like that for the, the pictures.
Any other questions? I'd entertain a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion, what's the actual rule? I'll make a motion to approve the requested allocation funds. Is that somebody?
That's good. Cool. Motion, I'll be second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Amanda, thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, look at you guys. Did you practice that or?
I did not.
Everybody else take notes. Next on the agenda, Public Works Director, Brandon Renn.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm I three as data system, I'm P C work order. Sure member of the Federal Fifth Twenty Twenty Four Meeting, the Council approved a massive services agreement with professional engineering consultants. I see how P C believe on important projects that are necessary to ensure our public infrastructure is keeping under pressure. One of the projects P C was hired to assist city staff with is the development of a special proposal for a new statewide supervisory control and data acquisition system, otherwise known as data. Um, these data systems are used for joint monitoring and analyzing utility devices and processes. Um, the systems consist both of software and hardware components and enables remote and onsite control and monitoring of all of our equipment. Um, the city's, um, current data system and a system that we are looking for, for in the future, allows the city's water system to function by electronically linking, controlling, and monitoring all pumps, disinfection, storage, and distribution of the water system. It also utilizes a wastewater treatment plant to monitor and control wastewater treatment processes. The system also monitors, um, traffic signals to assure that they are functioning and lets us know if we lose, have a loss of power or some other not function there, so we can address it. That's a safety concern. Um, our current data system uses old technology that limits its functions and upgrade capabilities. As we grow, um, we need to have adequate monitoring and control of our utilities, and that requires a replacement of the existing system with a new modern data system. Um, due to the highly technical nature of data systems, the experts at P C have been brought on board to assist with the development of the new system and writing up the request for proposal. P C's role in the project will consist of development of a written request for proposal, or RFP, for designing, acquisition, installation, and testing of the new data system for the wastewater treatment plant, um, our entire water system, which consists of wells, pump stations, bus stations, um, disinfecting the water tower, and of course, our traffic signals as well. Um, the project will also include the development of an opinion of probable cost and bidding and construction administration services. The, Public Works Room, the proposal for this work order twenty-four oh one from P C is seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars, and that is for all the services I've mentioned before. Um, if there are any questions, I do have Josh Colka from P C here that can help answer some. Um, I'll answer what I can and he'll do the technical stuff.
Will this, uh, be able to handle the future capacity with those demands?
That's, that's one thing we're going to, going to look at. Josh and I were talking before the meeting, and, and we want to build a system that is upgradable. And we've got to look at it in the fact that it's upgradable in the time that the components are not quite the obsolete by the time we operate it. So we're going to get the biggest, most modern package we can now with, with upgrades that are within the region timeframe that we want to do. We've got a lot, we've got a lot of interesting things we want to add to the system. We'd like to add some, um, water system pressure monitors and chlorine residual monitors, um, a lot more off-site control of our utilities. Um, that would help us a lot if we get a crazy call. For instance, um, we lose, a lightning strike shuts the blowers off at the plant. Currently, um, one of us has to go in and turn those things off. And if they get shut off three times a night, we go in three times a night to turn them on. This would allow us to get the alarm, say, oh boy, yeah, we lost power, blowers off, click, 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 log in, turn blowers on, monitor, see how they're working, look at the rest of the plant, see how it's working, and move on down the road without having to come back and forth. Um, as I said, the, um, the cost of this is seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars. It will be allocated one hundred percent to the American Rescue Plan Act or ARCA funds. That fund has been used for other utility upgrades. Um, we have to remember the, the system upgrade at the plant, uh, a third pump booster pump in the station, in the booster station. Um, current fund balance, not including the seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars, is three hundred forty-three thousand, two hundred forty-eight dollars.
That three hundred forty-three thousand will include this?
Okay.
Is it after, after this?
That's after this. Yes, that does include this, thanks, Matt. Any, any questions?
Yeah, so first, what's the timeframe look like?
We haven't discussed the timeframe on that, did Josh have you, if you have an idea on that? Hey, Josh, how you doing?
Very well, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for having me. Again, my name is Josh Colka with P C. Uh, so, so we're talking as in, of the fact that there's timing associated with the ARCA funding. Uh, our intent is to finish the RFP process, uh, by early summer, which will allow us to, uh, to bid and begin acquiring those costs yet this year for the actual infrastructure.
Mr. Mayor, if I might interject at the comment.
Sure.
So the, the American Rescue Plan Act funding doesn't necessarily have to be split this year, it just needs to be allocated, which we should be far enough along in the process to that be able to occur. And the other item I wanted to just note to, um, add to what Brooke shared with the financials, it's a not to exceed figure of seventy-eight thousand five hundred. They'll, they'll bill their man-hours, they've got a matrix that says each level of their organization, this, they cost this much per hour, so it's likely that it could come in lesser than that, but they give this as an estimate not to exceed figure.
So something else about, how familiar are you with the system? Really?
Our, our system, I'm very familiar with. It's old, it's antiquated, and we have lots of issues with it. Um, but I will tell you, it is technical enough that when I sit down and try to write this RFP, I said that I looked at it, and I've gotten snowballed many times at long range, and that the, the experts are here to help us and we get what we're paying for.
So I guess my, my only concern or, or question would be, you had mentioned, if lightning strikes blows the system, you in theory could restart the system at home?
No, okay, it doesn't, it causes our blowers to go off, which is a, a component of the wastewater treatment that provides oxygen to the basins that allows the biological process to occur. Um, without those blowers, the, the basins get stagnant, they go and oxygen, and we have other issues associated with the quality of our, of our wastewater treatment. Right now, lightning strikes, it goes off. We have to come in and physically turn those blowers off. One of the things that the new system would allow in this was just kind of an example of the, of the remote functionality we could give with the new system is we could get on our tablet and look at it and say, okay, here's the issue, let's turn the blower back on.
Okay, so question, what security measures does the system have in place to prevent somebody else from going in and turning them off? Because that would also not be good.
Uh, so it varies. We have a lot of options, um, in terms of just simple password protection up to, uh, uh, you know, dual authentication. Uh, you know, usually what we see, most municipalities focus, uh, the equipment in set tablets that are only distributed to staff. So they're not, uh, it's more about intranet than an internet.
Okay. I was just curious. That would also not be a great.
And security is very important, it is. And that's something that I know all the major firms that will bid on this will address.
Okay.
Hey, Council, another item of note, P C was involved in the original plant, how many years ago?
About fifteen.
About fifteen years ago. I don't know how many folks they still had around for back then, but there is some value to having, you know, someone. Yes, and these plants are like thumbprints, they're all unique in their own way. I'm also told they're not like voodoo, so they're not too hard to figure out, but.
They are voodoo. They don't think they are, but they're like.
At the same time, there's a lot of value in bringing in a third party. You know, Brooke's got the day-to-day parks, streets, water, sewer, all those different items. This is a, a large undertaking, and it makes sense to bring in a, an expert third party that can allocate their focus and attention to this large project. So our staff can continue keeping up with the day-to-day items that they have.
Are we good? Any additional questions? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve work order twenty-four oh one with P C for seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Pete, motion?
I second.
I go to Krista. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I next Director Wong. Next back.
This is a request purchase, uh, office furniture for City Hall. Um, in two thousand eighteen, uh, we did a pretty significant remodel of the project at City Hall. We included, uh, really redoing the front offices, redoing the police department. Uh, this, this room we're in now, it used to be about one-third, um, bigger, and we, uh, use that space that, uh, we took from there to add to the police department as well as, uh, storage area and, uh, put in the, uh, updated break room. Um, at that time, we purchased new furniture for most of the building. Uh, we did not purchase it for a couple of offices. Um, and we, since we are now adding the planner and chugging people around again, we think this is a good time to upgrade those offices in question with newer furniture that's more functional and, uh, actually fits the offices better than the spaces that are now. Uh, as you see here, some of the, this is actually not my office, you can see that some of that stuff's old and they dropped it all apart. Uh, Terry's desk is even worse. You got, you know, no front on this drawer, handles breaking, this stuff that, this inner office is not very good quality. Uh, this is a back office here where we currently got a bunch of stuff shoved in there that we, uh, make that a good, here will be, make better use of the space, make it more functional, because this office in addition to being, uh, the office of the, you know, city staff, we also use it for municipal court, where the court, the judges and their new folks need to be able to house their video footage, they need for video court, as well as housing staff. Um, and again, this is kind of, uh, we're doing this as part of adding the city planner, which is going into my office. I'm currently occupying, I'm in the back. Uh, we're going to get new furniture for Terry, Mica, and, uh, furniture that's in the office that we will be using for the new assistant two. Uh, that stuff was actually purchased at the time of the last remodel, so we'll be able to do that. It's still in the original shape and very functional for that size space. Uh, this is, we've got some, uh, layouts here of the office furniture we're proposing to go into these places. This here is going to go into Terry's office, that's just a footprint of what it looks like. Um, that's a rendering of what the new furniture will, will be. So it's, you know, it's designed for modern computers. It's designed for, you know, being able to secure sensitive information that Terry has, such as personnel records and other, uh, other records that need to be better protected than being any, probably kind of falling apart. Uh, this will be Tina's office, which is the one that I'm currently in. And again, it's modern furniture designed to be used with, uh, you know, modern computers, monitors, uh, various other equipment she uses in her function as city planner and engineering director. Uh, this is the, uh, community director's, Mica's office. And again, that furniture, his office is very old and not very good quality, doesn't make better use of that space. And he does meet very regularly with members of the public, members of the, uh, the elderly community, members of, uh, businesses that are coming to town, et cetera. So we don't want him to have, you know, the, the qualifier furniture in there. And that's just our just rendering what his will look like. Uh, this will be the back office there, and that's just, uh, you see here this cabinet over here, that's going to hold that monitor that's in there, as well as the other equipment that they use for video court. It's going to be still tight, uh, having a permanent staff member in there plus that video stuff, but we think it'll, we'll be able to make it work, um, with the layout that we have close there. Uh, so we did get a quote from Midwest Single Source, which is a, a vendor that deals with, uh, office furniture. And they happen to be able to purchase this stuff on the state contract, which is nice because, uh, currently we're being offered a discount, fifty-eight percent of what this would be, the state. fifty-eight percent of what this would be, the same product would be at that, uh, the normal retail price. So we're getting that as we just were. Uh, this is a breakdown of the costs for each office in question. Uh, some of them are good, they're, they're different prices because there are different types of furniture going in each one. We're going to be able to reuse some stuff that's currently available, some stuff we're not going to be able to use, so that's why they're different prices. And just a different layout of the particular, uh, furniture questions, they have different prices associated with it. Uh, for instance, you know, I've got that whole hush going into the office in the back there, so they're going to use the, how does that video court equipment? So, uh, total, uh, purchase price is eighteen thousand five hundred, uh, delivery itself is about twenty-five hundred. Um, we will be utilizing the capital out of the discretionary line item and the general fund, which is a line item that we typically use for non, um, major capital purchases. So we're going to be doing big projects like, you know, the, where we're adding a subdivision, or we're doing a big street building app, or, you know, specifically earmarking specific funds or getting special revenue, uh, for specific funds. We do a, you know, a bigger project and it's much more, you know, involved. We budget that line item for smaller projects like this that may not necessarily be associated with specific things like parks or streets or things like that. So that's what we use this line item for, an absolutely budgeted line of two point five million this year. So we have more than enough, uh, cash to pay for it. Typically, that line item is used for where we keep cash, we plan to carry over into next year. And so that, I'd want to grow significantly over the past couple of years, so we're planning to allocate additional resources from it into, moving to, uh, capital funding at some point. So, but, but not really, we're talking about here today, I just began talking about, talking about the opportunity. Uh, where our recommendation was that, uh, council authorize, uh, purchase from Midwest Single Source for that price, which I can, I can put it set up. Um, and we are anxious to get going, because it will take about six weeks to get that, uh, we'll need time to get that order and delivered and set up. And, you know, we're anxious to get everybody moving to where they can be, and I know, uh, Tina's special is ready to get into the office space.
I got a quick question. So, this is six months ago, we established office for the, for the mayor's staff to go in and, and have, um, you know, if we had some, they would want to speak with whatever, you know, for a private council area. Uh, is there going to be new space allocated for that?
Matt, can I take that one? So, the plan for that scenario, we will set this space up for those types of meetings. Any kind of, uh, scheduled meeting with the citizen, of course, we always hope that you'll use staff as a conduit to set those meetings up so we can be prepared and maybe do some research for you if that's necessary on whatever topic the citizen's wanting to discuss. We will set this room up for that purpose anytime that it's needed by the governing body. Shut the doors if that's necessary to have a private conversation. We have these tables we can put together. If it's a big meeting, maybe we're meeting with the executive committee at the Lions Club or something, a couple of council members, we can get three or four of these tables, kind of in a boardroom style. Uh, but we'll always have a space for you guys to meet constituents, I want you to know that for sure. Um, we're leaning on staff here for a city of our size. We've only got a couple of, we really got this, uh, back here, if you want to call it an office. When, once we are quote-unquote fully staffed, that'll be our next place to grow before, you know, we're figuring out how to share offices. So it can be a little bit of a, a, a tightrope act, uh, dealing with the space as efficiently as possible, but I want to make sure that folks understand that that goal of the council will continue to be affirmed. We will always have a meeting space for the governing body and their constituents.
Okay, we were looking at road, uh, expanding, those staffs going to expand over years anyway, so, um, we could go out.
We've, uh, we've had some, some tongue-in-cheek conversations about that. Um, you know, there's about ten feet to the south you could go, uh, to maybe add some offices. Um, but you know, at some point, if our community continues on its current trajectory, we'll have another firm similar to PDC, but maybe a little bit different from what they do, that'll put together, uh, some scenarios about how to best use the public space we have available and look at other sites if we do need new construction. Of course, we'd like to allocate our citizens' hard-earned dollars towards, you know, uh, the amenities such as parks and pools and playgrounds and libraries and community centers. We're not always wanting to, you know, spend it on space just to have our offices, so we're, we're going to try to use the limited space we have available for as long as possible.
Well, quality spaces.
It is.
Alright, so instead of being crammed in like sardines, that's all, that's all, so, yeah, all we need to, so, we look for the fu- future, you know.
We have tentative plans for, again, moving people around once we acquire additional space for a certain department and sub-future department. We're already looking into the possibility of doing that, it's just we're not ready to, we'll get through that, there's real estate issues to be addressed.
Beautiful dancing around, what you're doing.
On my review.
Two questions. One, if we get Terry a new desk, doesn't that mean he has to stay a little bit longer? That's what I was at the rule, you can't get a new desk and run. That seems unfair.
At least over a year.
Exactly. Uh, maybe nobody else cares about this, but while we're already ordering furniture, can we get some of the chairs that are in here replaced? Because some of these are terrible.
That's already, I, I, uh.
I did take a chunk out of this, kind of at the beginning.
I, I replaced my office chair last week, and I love it, and we've all commented on the state of the armrest in particular. Some of the, some of the.
Yeah, he holds them in his mind of my.
Yeah.
Pete's fish's chair.
There's not a choice.
We, we, we're going to replace these chairs.
Well, George said he'd kind of rebuild it all.
Oh, yeah? Well, they gotta have, they gotta have some stinging capabilities.
Alright.
Is everybody done? You have a question?
Sorry, the other members are.
It's okay, really good. Twenty hours ended here. Uh, I entertain a motion to approve the furniture.
Make a motion to approve the furniture not to exceed twenty thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars fifty a cent, unless it needs to be a little bit more cool off towards the end.
I'm going to ask you to approve this, that motion, and then, uh, I'll have another word here.
Alright. Make a motion to approve the purchasing of furniture not to exceed twenty thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars fifty a cent.
Keep motion. Second?
I'll second on contingency. I'm still second.
Aubrey seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then how about a motion to replace, uh, desk chairs in the council chamber for not to exceed seventy-five million dollars?
Make a motion to, uh, to approve replacing the office chairs in the council chambers not to exceed seventy-five million dollars.
Each?
No.
That will replace your ear, as well as some other offices if they also do. Because it, I believe the bid includes, uh, like, you know, chairs receiving from visitors, but not actual office chairs. So, a couple of those might be here.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor.
I like how you'll make it, and I'm more responsible with this thing.
I guess, I'm trying to break you guys up.
Thank you very much.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Now for the second half, we, after the development.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is item I five, this is City County Senior Area. So, quick background, City County offered a senior grant to municipalities, helps county senior services in the cities. City has got to apply for a substantial grant, complete agreement, approved by City Council February sixth of twenty twenty-three. The city, the city used some of the funds last year, but they're not expensing all the funds, and they may announce a step-by-county. City brought the sector in the quarter of Houdini, Apple team of Congress, over the city, if, uh, if they will assist the seniors in the program. Amendment federal has volunteered assistance seniors in management program. City will continue to act as a conduit for the financing, and the manual work will effectively grind for determining programs and services that can be potentially used to funding. City's applied for an initial six thousand dollars this year for twenty twenty-four. County has accepted the application, and the city council is favored to propose to receive funding, so it comes to the book and allow mayors on contact with the city, uh, and county and city further. Daughter, city staff will manage the funding and all receipts received from seniors will be reimbursed. Any funds not expensed will be resented back to the county. Contact operates on an annual basis, that, that program as well as seniors by seniors, and the city council will see it apply for again next year. Uh, so the city council is considering, we want to allow mayors on contact to grant funding to City County seniors classified sitting back over. Funding will provide recreational activities as well as programs for exercise of fitness, begun to coordinate with the seniors in the city. Uh, city staff will manage reimbursement as well as final audit by City County, grant amount will settle for six thousand. Funds will be paid first by the city to reimburse by the county, legally, quit as former rival, quoting all of the words signed. Please recognize the city council allowing mayor to sign a contract with City County for senior funding. I will entertain any questions or comments related to this and the management of this program.
This is kind of an annual process?
Oh, yeah, annually, so whatever we, we can expense, we do, whatever we don't expense, county just keeps. So if we spend a thousand, we'll ask for a thousand dollars in receipts, we send it to the county, they give us a thousand dollars back, and, uh, just don't give us anything else, we don't expense it. And then next year, we'll come back to you guys and say, hey, we can apply for more or less, depending on how the program goes. And if we do well, we can obviously ask for more, and then every year, if we can approve the mayor, who was the mayor at the time, to sign the contract, and say that we will provide by the granters, and the county will sell, and contract your license.
Just got it over, yeah.
You're there, aren't you?
No, I got two more here.
I'm still my YouTube.
Any questions on the right side of the table there?
I'm not close, so I'm not worried about it.
We, we've classified the community center as our senior center. We don't have a dedicated senior center. Um, the county said we can classify the community center as our senior center, that's what we did last year, and that's what we're going to do.
I entertain a motion to approve.
I make the motion.
Second.
Krista makes the motion, Brent seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much. This is item I six, this is the Rural Water District four cost assessment, or Arbor Creek second edition. So a developer for Arbor Creek Development has asked the city to assess the cost for releasing Rural Water District number four to the third phase of Arbor Creek, exactly, the second edition. Early phase of every development has dealt with Rural Water District negotiations, currently leased phase in service area of Rural Water District. These costs have historically been worn by a developer who then passes it on to the lot cost. But this is conversations last year between the city and Rural Water District number four, has initiated a discussion about assessing these costs to future property owners in form of assessments, just to be typically the same improvements. The cost is fifty thousand twenty, which equates to about five hundred dollars per acre. Arbor Creek second edition has forty-four lots in total, the water made petitions around three hundred thousand, the load is awarding vomiter construction four hundred seventy-one thousand zero five six, leaving a difference of one hundred twenty-eight thousand nine four four, allowing for the Rural Water District offset costs, the world is assessing the back phase. City council is considering allowing the Rural Water District offset costs to be assessed on the forty-four lots in Arbor Creek second edition. It's not running for acres, as mentioned, fifteen thousand total, petition amount is three hundred thousand, and difference is one hundred twenty-eight nine four four. This is the forty-four lots. So every time you do a phase or a development within the Rural Water District, you have to pay to have them release that service. And so either the developer, as mentioned, can pay out of pocket and then put it on the lot cost, or the developer can ask the city to assess it to that, uh, phase of development. Costs to allocate to bonds and trust fund, legally, it's through by Kevin Cowan, our bond attorney on the left. We did note that if acquisition process is over or ever becomes large, those are the other costs being financed by the city, we want to examine that for federal tax purposes. I will, I'll go back to Kevin Cowan, if you do have any other comments or questions related to that, but Kevin, do you have anything else you want to add in that regard? Or my certain question? Do you have any questions related to that?
So like the assessment specials?
Exactly.
How does that compare to the other specials in this?
It depends based on phase. Most of the specials are going to dictate about improvements related to that phase of development. So, I mean, if you have more infrastructure, or if you have more lots, it really kind of depends on that phase. But for this one, as it moves forward, it'll have an additional fifteen thousand dollars added to it, which I think over twenty years might be something like a dollar twenty-eight per month, but I'm not sure I can write all the numbers.
But the other sections of the development, we've paid the same.
No, this will be brand new. This is a brand new phase, uh, this is a brand new phase and a brand new assessment.
But I'm saying on the prior assessments, to release that ground.
He paid out of pocket.
Okay, he paid it.
We're trying to negotiate contract with Rural Water District four right now, but until that contract is finalized, we're going to have to break every request by the developer to assess the cost to the city council.
Look at that change. It says five.
It says five, no, right now, Rural Water District is dictated, it's gone five hundred, well, or in the future, yeah, it could change. Right now, Rural Water District could ask for more, I think they're looking at seven hundred and fifty per acre. Right now, they've offered five hundred per acre on this particular assessment. So for the future phases, if we did assess it, it could be seven hundred and fifty dollars per acre, and down the road, it could be more. But until we have a firm agreement with Rural Water District, how we're going to offset the service area costs, then it's somewhat of a five hundred one.
So is the rest of Arbor Creek not with Rural Water District four?
It's, he made work, or he just paid out of pocket.
But he paid all of that out of pocket.
That's right.
Changes when it.
And then put it back onto the lot cost. So, no matter what the citizens are going to do, future homeowners are going to be able to pay for an increased lot cost to offset the Rural Water District, or they're going to be paying assessments.
I just wanted to know what we're going to be getting yelled at about in a few weeks, so I'd just like to make sure that I, yeah, this is good, I appreciate that.
I'm good, I'm on the other side.
City council, I might, I mean, we're, we're talking about a future phase that's not yet built, so if you, when you go to buy the lot, you know what the price is, and you've decided to pay it, this is going to either be baked into the cost of the lot, or it's going to be within the annual specials you pay, so. And I would just caution in any other discussion about future agreements and stuff like that, let's try to keep those internal best as we can. Brian might agree.
See, that yelled at you?
No, that, that was not yelling. I never yell, I smile and talk mildly.
I'll be getting a thousand dollars in the morning.
Any other questions? I seek a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, allow the city staff to assess the costs of Rural Water District number four offset to Arbor Creek second edition.
Aubrey approves. Krista seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Very good. This is item I seven, this is the reinvestment housing incentive district resolution for the broader departments. So the background's a bit long, this one's a bit quickly, but the reinvestment housing incentive district, R H I D program design system development, different housing types areas identified by the city and approved by the council of commerce. Over allowance, city ready work developers, eligible costs incurred during development, specifically tract of land identified by the city council as ideal for future housing. City worked with Paul Stanley Law Firm, University of Chicago, University of Center for Economic Development Business Research, the C E B D R, to create a housing needs analysis, which is step one of the process for R H I D. On September eighteenth of twenty twenty-three, the city council approved the resolution creating the reinvestment housing incentive district geographic boundary, which is step two of the process. Housing needs analysis and resolution establishing district consent to Secretary of Commerce. On September second of twenty twenty-three, the city received a letter of approval from Secretary of Commerce, which is step three of the process. City has been working with Paul Stanley, taking with Rick Warren and Roddine Stevens, developing development agreement outlining how the development will proceed. Resolution has been drafted, calling for a public hearing in the resolution and the development agreement consented, where county commission of the F C C, the school district review, and comment. This is step four of the process. City must hold the public hearing thirty-seven days after adoption of resolution, calling for a public hearing. The city will present development plan during the public hearing, anyone who wants to, you can't see during this time. At the conclusion of the hearing, the governing body may establish the district by order subject to a veto period, which is step five. So there's a lot of reimbursement eligible costs. Um, as mentioned, here's the five steps. On my left, we do have Kevin Cowan, our council. On my right, we have Mark Haynes, architect, agent for applicant. This is a general rendering of the proposed apartments. As you can see here, this is the feature six S, sports car, pickleball, these are the softball gyms, baseball gyms, and there's this, here, this is daughter roads. Financial line, legally, it's been drafted, approved by Kevin Cowan, bond attorney. We recommend the city council approve the resolution for the development agreement for the broader departments developing column of public hearing for people first of twenty twenty-four. As mentioned, on council's on my left, we do have Mark Haynes, architect, agent for applicant, on my right.
Micah, one, one thing, and Kevin can allude to this further, where it says agreement, I believe it's supposed to say plan. The development agreement will come later on, probably a couple of months down the road. The development plans are one of the R H I D requirements.
Yes.
Am I articulating that correctly, guys?
Yes.
Okay. So there's a lot of moving parts with this, uh, economic development tool that we have. This is a, one of the earlier steps, although some of them have already been accomplished, uh, by the city council. So tonight, uh, just the resolution, approve the development plan, calling for the public hearing. There's some kind of wonky dates with which you make the publication and have the public hearing. This is purely procedural, having to do with the R H I D. Those other discussions will be appropriate when we begin talking about the development agreement and then at the planning commission level, of course, the site plan. So just a few extra things to throw in there.
So to summarize, we're just looking to set up a public hearing with this motion.
And adopting the development plan.
Okay. Is there any questions up there?
I, I'll just kind of give my heart about the situation because I know there's some, there's going to be a little bit of backlash, I'm sure. I think this would be fantastic. I think we are going to eventually have to address item ninety-nine. I think we all know that. The mayor's kind of come up with a couple ideas that maybe we can look into. But we're going to have to address it regardless. But what's special about the location of these being where they could, where they would be at is that with this location, the city would actually be able to collect sales tax on Amazon packages. So that would help pay off that star bond, is that correct?
Uh, well.
Can you explain that in the way that you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I think you're referring to the compensating use tax. That was adopted by Kansas back in the nineteen thirties. Basically, I don't know how much you guys want me to talk about that. But basically, I think, I mean, it's kind of, yeah, so, yes and no.
For some, yes.
Sure. Basically, I don't know how much you guys want me to talk about this.
We don't want to get in the weeds.
Okay, but yeah, but yes.
Amazon packages would be good for the.
Essentially, if you buy something online and it triggers compensating use tax, so if you purchase something from Nebraska, the state requires you pay minimum six point five percent plus any local sales tax on top of that. If that and the origin, if it's got a destination, origin, location, so basically if it originates in the star bond district, that compensating use tax actually goes to paying off the star bonds as well. So it's a percentage that goes towards payment. You know, and so if you have a hundred units or two hundred units or four hundred units or a thousand units, everybody shopping online on Amazon, it helps pay the bonds off faster with the compensating use tax that's collected at some point. So sorry, I didn't want to.
No, those are quick, I didn't, thought we'd pay it. But just like, give a little bit of insight to location, a little bit.
I think it's also a big part about the apartments as well is that mentioned from council members, but also previous council members as well, starting with individuals that can't perhaps afford housing immediately in Goddard who want to live in Goddard. So a lot of people would like to rent. Perhaps there's been this conversation about depression fatigue and just that idea of where else could be rent then possibility, because we only really have an eight unit apartment complex in the P admission that was built in nineteen seventies. And so those other options being made available to people would be beneficial for those who actually want to live and work in the, in the Goddard area. And not to mention the fact that the apartments, especially apartments in this, in this particular location, add density, which is something that really helps support commercial businesses, even small businesses and all businesses of all types. And so the density factor, especially not with one ninety-nine, means you have people within walking distance of Main Street, which would actually help support the small businesses on Main Street as well.
And then these are Class A apartments?
These are Class A. Yes, these are Class A, which the definition of Class A can vary depending on who you ask, but it's going to be what's considered the best and brightest for the market. So our market, obviously, when compared to nineteen seventies apartments, anything brand new is considered Class A, but the amenities in particular would be a Class A. And then the quality of the material that's comprised inside these apartments would be Class A as well.
What are the expected rentals?
It's, well, I mean, generally speaking from conversation, I don't know. Kurt, do you want to address that a little bit as well?
Let's not get too deep.
Yeah. They have a housing needs assessment that had to be utilized to create the R H I D and within that, there's some discussion about what the market rents are going to be for these. But you're talking lesser than what we're seeing with our three two-bedroom stuff, our duplexes, but more than some of your subsidized housing, which we have quite a bit of in other areas of town. It's, we don't, we hesitate to throw numbers out because it's not our project, it's a private development. And so, you know, if we throw a number out there, then that could sometimes cause offense.
Yeah, that's just important ahead of forty.
It's going to be market or above market. And Goddard typically rents five percent above market, typically cars, so, but it's not going to be considered subsidized. So it'll be considered more affordable to somebody who doesn't want to rent a duplex if they want to rent a apartment instead, certainly more affordable that way. But it's not going to be in the sense of like subsidized senior housing or something of all that. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the development plan for the Goddard Apartments' development and calling it public hearing for April first, two thousand twenty-four.
Key motions, can I have a second?
Second.
Brent, seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the development plan for the Goddard Apartments' development and calling it public hearing for April first, two thousand twenty-four.
Key motions, can I have a second?
Second.
Brent, seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. This is item I eight. This is a recreational living zoning classification. So a quick background, the property owner has mentioned as item three, a recreational vehicle park with land, it was recently annexed to the U S U L S. And reviewing city subdivision regulations, it turned out that none of his zoning classifications allow RV parks without any good classification created. This was brought before Frank Fisher on January eighth of two thousand twenty-four and has decided to start the process for adoption of RV parks zoning classification. City published U S N C newspaper on January eighteenth, allowing twenty days to last prior consideration of adoption of new zoning districts with tax requirement. February twelfth of two thousand twenty-four, Frank Fisher viewed improve adoption of new zoning classification. City council has final authority for adoption of all new zoning classification. City council is considering the adoption of zoning classification for our recreational living. RV parks do not flex any guest tax as a note. Federal Industry Association of Kansas, this is the RV park tax incorporation assessed at twenty-three percent. That's kind of what I saw according to mobile land records. I can't really substantiate that, I'm not sure where I came up with that, but according to the county records, it's assessed at twenty-three percent. So recreational living district as defined in ordinance, which you'll see in the exhibit, discussion of the staff sort of buys basic recreational vehicles, campers, and other recreational uses for a short duration of time after they're allowed for in municipal districts. Here's how I have drafted it. Feel free to comment at any time if you guys want to see something different, if you want to see it amended in any particular way. We can obviously pay away or consider it at a later date if needed, if you want to change any changes. This is how the ordinance is drafted. So it's very prohibited. Obviously, we're not going to allow anything that would be considered, should be considered in a different zoning classification. You can't do a recreational living in all sense for apartments in there, we wouldn't allow that. You can't do recreational living, you can grow manufacturing plant or Best Buy, we do not allow any of that, particularly for transit guests, typically those who may be visiting the star bond district or traveling group. Lot size requirements, we are going to force them to require them to have a site plan under Article eleven. So we're going to say that since we can't really define how big a lot should be for an RV, they're going to have to be, they're going to have to provide a site plan so we can actually put eyes on it. And we'll take, all site plans have to go to the planning commission, so they can take a look at it, a layout. And that way it'll help us kind of determine if it's the best use of space and how they're going to have a layout in that, that, your recreational money. We did put no use of zoning classification, shall be allowed, have RV campers clear with the occupancy sort in the land, duration of three, six months. We had brought this before a planning mission and there was concern about the possibility of squatters and things of that nature. We threw out three months, we also mentioned six months. The ordinance hasn't drafted, actually says six months in the ordinance. So just depending on what you guys think is reasonable. To run up to the legal, we'll go back. So it'll be a small publication process, it isn't ordinance. Legally, approved as a form Robert Gordon on Morris Lane, we do, we were trying to grow and squatting. So this was the question brought by a planning mission, and so this is addressed by Robert Gordon on Morris Lane. And you can read that out of the papers, but this is verbatim. The zoning code areas are usually included in its use. Do not believe that a person complaining, you need to comply with zoning rules and basis of playing your home state. So I think you have all the authority you need, this can be an obligation to take action against zoning laws that we've been violating. So if somebody, let's say it was six months, and they were like, no, I have squatters rights now, I'm going to stay here for a seventh month, we could, we could force them to act based on zoning regulation enforcement.
And that six months is also, that's an uprange limit. So if it was running the park, it actually had a lower.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. It's something to be considered. If you felt like it should be nine months or if you felt like it should be four months, it's completely up to the city council how you want to adopt the ordinance to report.
But I'm saying though that.
Yes, if you're operating, you can.
I can pick anything under that.
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, you can't violate the zoning as the operator, but you can say that enforcement, just like H L A would, you know, would be so.
Was this looking for like a legitimate RV park or campground? I mean, per se, I mean, did you see, I see other, I mean, RVing, so I see Kansas, particularly that put mobile homes in RV park. I mean, so what's the, you get what I'm saying? So I mean, it's like you want to keep it an RV park.
There had to be an RV park.
Like temporary use for travelers or.
Yeah, that was actually acceptable, because under primitive uses, you would see recreational vehicles, campers, and travel trailers, park spaces, parking that in campground, I mean, anything else related to that parked ground, but it would not allow the mobile homes, that's a specific land use. So if somebody were to try to do that, then you first you have to pull a permit and approve it, because you can't, you can't have a mobile home.
I didn't know that. I just see that in Kansas, so.
Yeah, no, we're very strict. You can't build, you can't build anything in Goddard greater than a hundred and twenty square feet without our approval.
So with A four, does that, campground, does that mean people could like pitch a tent for a weekend at this place?
I mean, if it was, if it was designed that way, I suppose they could. If there was a campground layout, for example, if somebody wanted to create an area and get designated a recreational living and have amenities of that sort, they got a pond, have fishing, and have an area where you can have tents and RVs and things of that nature, then yeah, that would be acceptable, if it was classified that way. But then the site plan would have to dictate that, the site plan would shape it. This is what we're, this is what we're proposing, this is the layout of the land, we're going to have a pond over here, we're going to have fire pits and amenities and things of that nature. You can't pitch a tent for here in this area, and that would be considered acceptable.
So that's to come, right?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I got one comment, and I'm so sorry to keep interjecting during your wonderful presentations, Micah. Something that just kind of popped in my head. In a community I served prior, R reg said no more than fifteen days at a time, four times a year. And the reason it was written like that was because with this, and Ryan made me think about this a bit as I'm talking, you could technically stay there six months in a row, one, go park in a parking lot for one day and then come back for another six months. So maybe we want to tweak that a little bit to say six months, no more than one, so I don't know what the right language would be, but the reason we had it written like that in the other community was so they couldn't just stay for the maximum of time, leave for twenty-four hours and come right back.
It'd just be like this, and you just switch spots.
And that's the same, that's the same issue. And maybe it's a non-issue.
As far as, as far as a campground owner, somebody that owns something like that, I mean, we're a huge diverse community here. So you have engineering contractors, the people in narrow space that go places for a year at a time, and they travel in their RVs. They want a very nice, taken care of, you know, place where they can feel safe and, and you know, and the way they control that is by controlling the age of the rigs they pull in, right? Some of them are older than ten years. But, you know, to limit it at six months, you know, I mean, that's, that's kind of the, you know, typically, just, I'm speaking from that industry, is that, you know, once they comes in, they're typically here for a year. You know, so you can make requirements, you know, you got to leave for a day and come back, you know, but there's a lot of things you'll need to consider with that. And that's going to be a big pull for the owner.
So would you support removing that six-month restriction? And I don't, the staff doesn't, you know, have a feeling one particular way or another. My thought was for, we have all these new homes being built in our community, some custom. If you have an RV and you need a place to stay while your house is being built, it might take more than six months for the house. So I see the restriction of the six-month being an issue. And I think it could be something we consider increasing or doing away with completely. I don't, what was the tenor of the planning commission with the, with the time restriction?
I think six months was generally kind of what they were leaning towards, but their biggest concern is home study, and then having people staying on at that limit. But other than that, it's kind of looking at it. So that's kind of where I, I agree with that legal opinion, but I didn't, we kind of trust that he said that was brought up by the commissioner.
So it'd be just a, you know, whatever we can say, but it'd really be up to the business owner to set those contingencies for his business.
So take out the six-month restriction.
Right.
We could definitely do that. We can take out the six-month. We can modify how the, the ordinance however you want, and then.
I think that ordinance would be too restrictive, but still, work protects the, you know, the owner.
Are we leaning towards taking out the time restriction?
I would recommend that.
I mean, personally, I was leaning the exact opposite way, so.
The one caution is it won't be as easy to insert that restriction in at a later date. Because then you may have complications with the developer. If it conflicts with what the developer is wanting to do and operating their, you know, his business, you could have issues of inverse condemnation if he come in and subsequently impose a restriction that creates a hardship on how he's been operating. So I hear what you're all saying, just understand there may be some complications associated with trying to impose that at a later date.
So I think for me, I think we need more clarity on the intention of the operator. So with that in mind, I would like to motion to table this and invite that whoever will be the ordered operator to come to give us some clarity on the intentions behind it.
Vice Mayor, I'd add another point, you know, where this is not specific to one project. This is going to be applied to the whole community. We've had others who've brought up this potential land use. And so I think we would be careful in writing the rules for one guy's project, you know. So I don't know that we needed to call this a workshop, but it's kind of what it is. You know, we wanted to assess out what your opinions were on the matter, because we don't anticipate this to be the only one. We have a couple of regional destination attractions in our community, and not everyone wants to stay in hotels, so we need to get this right. And if we want to take a little extra time, I think that's perfectly okay. Once the ordinance is approved, they still have to go through the zoning amendment process to get the zoning classification for each specific property that would want to do this land use. And then, of course, they'd have to go through the site plan process, they may have their own more restricted covenants. So just keep that in mind, you're kind of, you're setting a precedent that'll be utilized for, you know, not just this one gentleman's property that has ambition to do an RV park.
So basically, if we did like three months, we could change it to six months, ten years from now we want to.
It's easier to loosen it up than to restrict.
Yeah, that's loosen it up, right?
I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
It's easier to lift restrictions or lessen restrictions on property than it is to impose partial restrictions.
So when we do that.
If you'd like to change it in the future, stop it on active management.
Well, could we get some business owners that actually do this in to give them experience a little? Because I know that, like I said, I've done this in the past, you know, in my previous career, but there's, you know, the money-making aspect of a lot of these owners are that people that are there for their long term, right? It's costed revenue versus the overnight or the long weekend, you know, so it's part of their business plan. You know, they allocate certain lots just for people that are going to be here.
Long term.
Long term, yeah. Yeah, but then they can restrict the covenants of how those, you know, you're talking about hay bales, but you can restrict them. Maybe if we just hear it from somebody that has that business plan, we can get a better understanding and we can help mold something that's good for everybody.
Yeah, but I just feel like we're not in a place to make a decision right now, which I know we can change it later, but I'd rather not have to go through that process if we get avoided. So I'll make a motion to table.
Motion to table.
Just to be clear, the direction to staff is to look at a couple of nearby parks and maybe get a copy of their covenants, and then if a zoning classification exists in their and then if a zoning classification exists in their community, bring that as well.
Motion on the table.
I second Keaton's motion.
Thank you. Grant seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Thank you very much. It's a table for the future day.
This is I nine. This is a resolution amending the master fee schedule. So after November seventeen twenty twenty-four, city council made a decision about the resolution. Staff is saying I can consolidate the master fee schedule with assistance staff and public, including local and appropriate fees. For the time of time, these fees should be amended to more accurate with like costs associated with services and insurance and otherwise. City, city staff are asking to add to the master fee schedule one-time fee to have their upfront building permit issued by the city. This fee will go towards contracting to company to pump out stormwater systems that can be infiltrated by self-managed construction. Multiple cities currently contract with companies that service their storm sewer system, remove self-managed construction plans aligned to keep the ORENTA new to make first and then to send the handover. City council is considering approving that resolution that amends the master fee schedule for the storm system maintenance fee. This will be charged once for building permit for new builds, few of the two developers can be charged. Changes in the future as needed, following the examples of other cities, use to be projecting out the storm sewer system and self-deposits and admin construction. Financially, non-legally, it's proposed by Robert working in Baltimore's lay. Is our consent council about the resolution for many master fee schedules for the storm system maintenance fee? I will adjoint any questions or comments or thoughts related to this.
It's a good idea. Make a motion to help the resolution permitting the master fee schedule to include the storm system maintenance fee.
I second.
Keaton's motion, Chris second, all those in favor say aye.
Thank you very much. This is I of I ten. This is a final plat for the one hundred and sixty-seventh west edition. So the engineering department has submitted a application on behalf of Palksus Development for a tract of land down in the located on the west side of one hundred and fifty-seventh street west in south of U.S. ninety-four. Land is around two point five seven plus minus acres and the physical is divided into one hundred and fifty-five residential lots. The northern lot to be cheap one hundred and twenty homes, the northern lot to be single family detached with the southernmost lot being smaller patio home. This plan was approved for rezoning on December twelfth of twenty twenty-two before the planning permission and finalized city council on January third of twenty twenty-three in case under zone dash twenty-two dash six and zone dash twenty-two dash seven. The floor map was approved about April tenth of twenty twenty-three before the planning permission. The final plat was approved on February twelfth of twenty twenty-four. Plaques need to be reviewed by the city council. The council approved the final plat for consideration approval of zone R one and R four acres of sixty point five seven, both footage is around two plus six million, one hundred and fifty-five lots. It's one hundred and sixty-seven U.S. fifty-four right near the trail. Palksus Development Engineering for this bathroom housing style between home patio shop and single family attached. So plat is an awkward shaped plat, kind of due to this sort of funnel that you're gonna see over here on the right side, on the left side over here. It's, it's creating an awkward shape right near fifty-four and northern trail. This land was sold to Kedat, that took so long for them to handle the process. But what you're gonna see here is the larger twin homes will be on the northern tip of that, of that track of land. Single family detached traditional homes will be around the center over here, over here. And the patio style will be south of the trail on this triangle shape. This is kind of a little opium here. Here's fifty-four, this is one sixty-seven. So twin homes as similar to what you're seeing closely, these are single family detached traditional homes, R one, single family over here. This is the R four density, the high density ones, which are gonna be those shopper style homes, which are kind of new to our housing market. Financially, non-legally approved as a form, this recommends the council approve the final plat for the one hundred and sixty-seventh west edition. I entertain any questions or comments related to this.
I think it'll be really interesting to see how the shotgun homes, the smaller star homes, single homes will be accepted in our community. I think that's a void in our market and I think we're really happy to see that being addressed.
I agree with you.
Any questions? I entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the final plat for the one hundred and sixty-seventh west edition.
Second.
Keaton's motions, grant seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
As Public Works Director Brandon Murray comes to present this next item, I'm gonna accuse myself. I live on two twenty-seven North Spurs, which is a corner. And my property adjoins Second Street and Second Street's a part of this discussion and I will step out, so I'll let you take it over. Just remember when I come back, you have to, you have to give that back to the students.
Hey, we can just not pay him in front of his house.
Well, well, for the record, these street choices have nothing to do with where the mayor lives. I'll state that upfront. Item I eleven is twenty twenty-four street maintenance project authorization. Best practices indicate that street pavement preservation applications should occur every five years on each city roadway. In twenty eleven, the city council adopted Goddard pavement rehabilitation plan with the goal of rehabbing each of the streets on a five-year cycle. This is what the rehab plan is. It kind of shows what type of treatment should be done on the street according to its age. Some of that's relative to what kind of damage has been on the street, but this is, this is kind of the process we try to follow if possible. For twenty twenty-four street maintenance, we're proposing an RFP that calls for bids on twenty-five street segments. May not maintenance items to be bid include a full-depth, re- depth reconstruction of the north frontage road from one ninety-ninth street to Barber and a two-inch millon overlay of that frontage road from Barber on East Two where they realign the frontage road in twenty twenty-three. Second project is to upgrade Second Street from gravel to asphalt from Main Street to Goddard Road. Additional street projects include a two-inch millon overlay on the following streets. Second Street from Main Street to Walnut, that would include a hundred and forty-one feet of rehab curb and gutter. And if we do that, that means all of Second Street from Goddard Road to Walnut will be rehabbed. It will be essentially a new street. Another street that we're proposing additional overlay on is South Walnut Street from the trail crossing south to twenty-third. If you go down that street, you'll notice that very something, there's some big potholes, it's got a lot of alligator cracking. And the best way to fix that is just to get rid of that and resurface it. The third to be proposed is North Side Circle and Seasons subdivision. For some reason, when this map was put down, whether it didn't get compacted or it got too cold or something, it's chunked out and it's, it's essentially cracked sealed, now it's together, but it's in small pieces, the entire cul-de-sac. And so we thought, get ahead of the big potholes, I would be in there to replace that. Yep, the RFP will also include the repair of twenty utility cuts and this last should be a separate RFP. And deep potholes in various locations throughout, throughout the town. As we know further, there are roads needing full rebuild, how those roads are, are planned and implemented into the twenty-five year street plan. So we will address those as we go with that road. Few maps up here of the proposed projects. This is the north frontage road, one ninety-nine. Where Barber is platted, it's not an actual paved road. That will be a full-depth reconstruction that will, everything will come out and be replaced. They'll fix all the stuff off of the base up, frame in asphalt. From Barber Street East to where the frontage road is realigned, that will be a two-inch millon overlay. Any soft spots, what I call them, where maybe the damages gotten down, potholes down into the base, they will cut that out and repair that. It will be definitely aligned in that. Second Street, this is the upgrade of Second Street from gravel to asphalt and it is from Main to Goddard Road. Then the other millon overlay and a hundred and forty-one feet of gutter we're proposing is Second Street from Main Street to Walnut. And as I said earlier, that would essentially make Second Street rehabbed all the way from Goddard Road to Walnut. The section of Walnut that we're proposing is a pretty long section from twenty-third street all the way to the concrete trail crossing. The reason we chose the trail crossing is because north of there, that road had been rehabbed, it's in a lot better shape. And so we, we, to keep within our budget, we chose to do this portion of it. And then as I stated before, Winter Set Circle and Seasons, we've got a lot of problems with that coming apart. And so we get ahead of it before it's full potholes and potholes because it's a cul-de-sac we like. So the, um, twenty twenty-four annual street maintenance RFP will be posted to this website. Actually, we've been discussing with city engineer, home quarter and the city minister to cross it. We're gonna get it a couple more days so we can double check some of his calculations and quantities and make sure that things do it before he makes this. So we're looking at probably actually the twenty-third now. We're asking bids to be due at City Hall by two P M. Monday, March twenty-fifth. And we'll like get these out as soon as possible because if we get in earlier with the contractors, it's a better chance of getting good contractors out here. So a little bit about financial, the twenty twenty-four budget contains two million one hundred and twenty thousand dollars of street maintenance rotation projects. The north frontage road and Second Street projects, the upgrade of the gravel to the asphalt on Second Street will be paid D F N's from the general obligation bonds on issue two one twenty-three dash A. It has a current balance of one point, one million seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The remaining projects are funded by four, four hundred thousand dollar street maintenance budget that has split two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to special highway streets fund and one hundred and fifty thousand to capital improvements. Legal is approved as, as a form. Any questions?
So this is something that, that we really wanted. Last year we started working on, on kind of deciding some of this stuff. So excited to see that. I know the mayor is really wanting to make this up. We're doing it every year. He really wants this to be an annual maintenance kind of thing. So what's our timeline looking like? I know we've got Calog rolled out, but could we do north frontage road while Calog's under construction? Do we have to wait?
It's hard to say when we get our bids in, if possible, you know, Pearson is out there. Pearson likes to do work in the city. They've told you that. They do great work. Maybe we can get a little bit of economy of scale by getting them to jump on board there, but we don't know for sure. We'll, we'll send out the RFP and we'll see what their response is and whoever responds.
One, one of the things we'll ask is when do you anticipate you could do the work?
Definitely.
And if you got a low bid, that's way lower than the next highest, but it might take an extra few months. You kind of have to do that analysis in your head. You know, what's, is it worth the wait? But it's, it's really hard to nail them down. I mean, I would be happy if we got these done this year. That's how long it could take because there's a lot of projects in a lot of cities that spend money on roads.
If, if we're lucky, Pearson will get more bids in the subdivision whereas we're building them and they, and that makes it quick for them to get their work here. Yeah, they, they like to do work here, so. And I'm not just choosing them, but we've had very luck with them, so.
When did, when did you say this is gonna be realigned?
This is gonna be realigned on twenty-third of this month.
So a little over a month, a little over the open.
Correct, correct. Close, close enough. It'll give them adequate time to, to put together a good bidding package.
Did you further discuss, show to the other question?
I'm happy to see Second Street getting done.
Yeah.
Who needed it?
All right, seeking a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, sorry. Reg, reg staff to move forward with the release of twenty twenty-four street maintenance requested for proposal RFP.
Motion by Aubrey.
I'll second that.
Second by Britt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We voted to do everything but your house.
Yeah. Right or either? I'll let you talk to him anyway. I, I just want to say, I think that's really important. We're starting in a process. This decision's gonna be a one-year event. We've been way behind in street maintenance in this community for a long time and we're up to play a little catch-up. But I think that's, we're gonna be the best city in, in Cidmore County in Kansas, part of us taking care of our infrastructure. I look forward to continuing to work to establish a more comprehensive plan going forward to take care of those issues.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
You are on.
All right, thank you. Uh, this next item is to approve the raise grant submitted. We just talked about roads all night tonight. It's good stuff. So we'd like to apply for a raise grant. Uh, the grant would subsidize eighty percent of the cost for a capital roadway project that cuts through the heart of the Goddard Galleria area. That's the piece of land of the Walmart, the Brahms, Dairy Queen, Murphy's Gas. It's kind of that square right there. The grant would pay eighty percent and then the local match would be the responsibility of the developer or the owner uh, to, to cover the remainder of that cost. Here's a visual of the road. You can see it starts up there on the south Kellogg Frontage Road and then it runs due southeast over to one eighty-third street over there behind Walmart. So what, what getting this road built does is it opens up a lot more opportunity and attraction to these out parcels. Of course, we talked about apartments, housing density, those rooftops bring retail. Having that road in will really help the cost of entry for some of those potential tenants that may want to come in. And the more retail we can get, the faster we can pay off the Starbon district and perhaps we can get some of those sought-after restaurants that our citizens would like to see. So anytime we can get a grant to help do the heavy lifting for us, that's always a good opportunity that we want to jump on. So I do want to caution the optimism, this is a federal program. So we're not only just competing with municipalities in the state of Kansas, but we're, we're competing for dollars that are available nationwide. I think the last round, there was only two awards in Kansas. However, you happen to have hired a, a pretty decent grant writer, so I'm gonna give it the old college try and see if we can get this grant for our community. So it's due February twenty-eighth, so I might be burning the midnight oil here. I worked really well under pressure, so most of the work is still to come. And we'll see how that turns out, but we've been having some conversations with agency partners, folks up in Spica are aware of our application. And so we get a couple of letters of support. And of course, we've got some opinions of probable cost from different engineering firms that have looked at this and has built, but show the size of the road. But if we can get these dollars, it really kind of accelerates some of the things going on on that side of the community. So I'll be quick here. I'll show you a three point eight million dollars. Again, it's an eighty-twenty split, eighty percent grant, twenty percent privately financed by the developer. And here is the recommendation. I would also add one last thing. If this grant is approved, we'll have several other agenda items related to it. We'll have to come before council again to talk about contracts and bids and all other sorts of things. So this is just the start. Thank you.
Any questions? Isn't it great to have a city administrator?
He's so humble too.
Artists working man.
They were doing just fine without me, I will say.
No, I appreciate your willingness to point to this track. I mean, that would be a tremendous win for us if we could get this. I entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to authorize city staff to submit the raise grant application.
Keaton, again, make some motion, Chris second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item H, Dam Jam. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, yeah. So, so just some background for anybody who didn't kind of see what I pulled in the last couple of weeks. The Dam Jam is an event that was hosted out, out by Captain last year. And this year, in two weeks' time, a county commission meeting, county commission voted to deny their event permit request. Meaning that they don't, that they currently don't have a place to, to do the Dam Jam. And so I've, I've had a couple of different meetings, couple of different conversations and I've kind of wrestled with it because some of the reasoning for, for not doing it, I completely understand. But I felt that as a city that is so close in proximity to Lake Outt, you know, those, those people are shopping at our liquor stores, our Walmarts. They're on our main street. And so we are seeing direct economic impact because of an event like this. So I hate to see it, you know, there are a lot of other places that are now saying, hey, we would love to host this event, please come to us. And I would hate to just see it slip to our fingers without any conversation. So before we dive into it, I just want to give a, a little bit of background as to why I care about the Dam Jam. And it has absolutely nothing to do with music. It has to do with who they are and who the people that run the Dam Jam are. So a couple of different places that the Dam Jam's partnered with is Nation of Patriots, focused on supporting veterans. And last year they had, I can't remember what it's called, but the, the flag got taken across all fifty states and that happened at the Dam Jam. The handoff in Kansas happened at this event and they're gonna, they're fighting to do it like that again. So national attention. Secondly, they're partnered with Beauties and Beast. I am an odor of a pit bull, so I have, my heart is tugged out when Beauties and Beast is involved. That's another great organization. They're also partnered with Legacy Works ICT, which works with foster care. They're partnered with The Gotcha Project, which the, the wording is projects ensures, project ensures that the joy and unity brought by music are accessible to all, promoting inclusivity. ensures that the joy and unity brought by music are accessible to all, promoting inclusivity and belonging. As somebody who works in special education, I am all about creating atmospheres where people feel like they belong and they feel like they are somebody. They also work with Midwest Battle Buddies, joining forces with Midwest Battle Buddies, we're committed to supporting veterans through the companionship and assistance of service guards and enhancing their quality of life. Also, the festival is not just a giant party with alcohol everywhere. They work with Emergent, Emerged Sober Living. So there's actually a portion of the festival gave it off and made specifically for those who are living a life of sobriety. Gives them a place that they can go and enjoy this festival, too. And you don't see this kind of stuff in other festivals. The Damn Jam is so much more than what it's been made to be in these last couple of weeks. And something else that I think is so cool is at the end of it, the very last day, they use that stage and they worship our Lord. They take time every year to put on a church service at the end of this event. They've gotten a lot of backlash the last couple of weeks because of one artist. I understand that. I get where they're coming from. But the Damn Jam is a whole lot more than real or Walker Jr., and I think it would be a very bad decision for us to sit by silently and not at least offer some help in some ways.
They did this a few years ago, Lake, El Dorado, Lake Brighton. So, you know.
No, it's different people. It was originally, how does that tie in?
It's a different organization and different organizers.
Okay, yeah, it's completely different people.
It's different.
Yeah.
I like to try to encourage them to have them come every year to Lake Abbot. I'm not going to say that artists by name, but they need to take some consideration when they sign on contracts or these are, need appropriate artists to come in, you know, not because, you know, the current. So is that the whole reason that they turned them down?
No, the actual, the reason that they gave was resources and public safety, something that actually, one of the organizers reached out to me today. We had a phone conversation, just about different options. I had a meeting yesterday with a couple of different people and we talked about could Out West take it on here in Goddard and just kind of look at the space and it doesn't work great. But then Chris Carr reached out to me and said, well, could we get the Goddard Police Department involved? And so, well, that's not my place to say, and maybe that's a conversation we have. But they were using, they're using off-duty officers. So it's not like the officers were on duty when they came out there. It's guys who are choosing to take time to be out there. One of their big concerns is that they would probably want to have an EMS unit on site and so that takes away from, you know, you have a kid choking downtown and their closest EMS unit is in, or is out Lake Abbot. But in my opinion, that's also a part of the county, that if you've got 6,000 to 9,000 residents in your county out Lake Abbot, it feels applicable to have an EMS unit out there to protect them. Their lives are just invaluable.
Logistically, I don't think Out West can handle it.
Now, they said they might be able to do it this year, but future, it's just not practical.
I'd like to have further discussion if we can get the organizers in here and come up with a plan, you know. I'd like us to directly kept the city, I would like for us to write a letter in support through the county and strongly encouraging that we can get this done with the contingency of removing that particular artist. I don't see us, anybody being out there with children to hear this guy's rendition of some of the songs he does is just, it's unacceptable to me, you know, that belongs in Ockie Conville, West Texas and on the boulevard, you know, long out here in public, you know, so.
My only concern with pushing it back is they are on a very strict timeline. I mean, their event is in July and although that feels, it's a few months away, they've got to know where they're doing this. They've got millions of dollars worth of contracts. So that's just my only hesitancy with table, would be there as a tight timeline.
Also.
Amanda has some insight, she has, if you.
No, we're not going to. I don't disagree with anything that's been said. But I think we need to be cautious when we start, there's a difference between sending a letter from Chamber of Commerce and the city administrator as opposed to us as a council making action. It's something that the county's working on. They've had, what, two meetings with the county and they're still in the process of negotiating this, right? So, I mean, I think before we get too far ahead of ourselves here, we ought to give the county an opportunity to work through this. I, and part of what the resolution might be is what you're talking about. I know that one of the comments I'd heard is the amount of people that were there last year was more than the 3,500 range in terms of attendees. And so when you show up and make a proposal and you double that, you know, maybe they maybe created an inflated picture of what actually is going to transpire out there. And, you know, and if, you know, our police department, I believe, is deputized with the county. So if there's, if there's off-duty people working the event, if they need police assistance, there's going to be law enforcement, which you could include us, in support of that. So, I mean, there are some, there are some, and I know I was told last year, great crowd, no problems. But I think, I just don't want to, you know, we've got some important things that are going to go before the county commission here in the next several months and I would hate to, you know, create a friction point with them and create problems for us as we, you know, down the road, six to nine bids. I think it's, it's an important event for the community. It'd be great that it does continue, but I would just hope that, you know, let's give the county just a little bit more time, maybe delay a few weeks, the county will have their next meeting, maybe we'll go ahead and make the adjustments and get it taken care of. So, I mean, that's, that's my take.
I think, again, I just, I feel like we're on, that they're on more of a timeline. I mean, the initial meeting was the 7th, February 7th. And then on the 14th, they, they had multiple people, I mean, they had like nine or 10 people get up and speak during public comments in support of it. And then they received a bond and that was it. There wasn't even discussion. So that's why I think something like the magnitude of a city council saying, and I think it comes down to wording with the concerns of future endeavors. I don't think we need to go in there and say, you're wrong, this was dumb, change your mind, but saying, hey, just from a city standpoint.
I would just like to send a letter and make them, because Vice House Solace has been canceled.
It has not been canceled. They've got millions of dollars.
I ran across it that the event's been canceled. So I think it's important in our community that we have annual events like this, you know, and that's, and music is always a phenomenal format to bring people together. It can grow and grow and grow, you know, so as far as the security aspect, I think it's up to the promoters and the organizers to come up with a contingency plan on how, how that's going to function, right? I don't want to stick my hand in and say we're going to be doing stuff. I just wanted a simple encouragement from us that, you know, we would like this and I would like to extend that offer from those guys coming, you know, give them a home right here for that. It'll be turning something great down the road, just like the Woodgrass Festival down Seven, you know.
And I think, I think within the letter, it's, like I said, it's all about wording. I think if you say, hey, we understand the concern about this specific artist, we echo that, we're not huge fans of that, we understand the concern about public safety, we'd love to see conversations kind of work through that. But, but I think that being the only city that's really directly impacted by this, I think that it is our job to say, you know, I mean, our businesses see a spike that weekend. We've got a brand new hotel for those who don't want to camp. We've got a brand new hotel for them to go to. It's got a great water park, you know, we've got these new amenities. And so letting this event just go and then we come back five years down the road, that's a much bigger.
I don't think we're letting go.
I disagree.
All I'm saying is, this isn't our decision at this point. We can be supportive of what they're trying to do, but say we're getting ready to approve one of these developments and we get a letter from the county commissioners saying that, you know, you guys are, you know, shouldn't do this. I mean, how long is that going to be received from there?
Well, I mean, we can.
I'm just saying, I mean, just.
Don't want to ruffle any feathers.
Right, and that's what we're concerned about.
It's just that, you know, just a letter we're referring, hey, we support this thing, you know, we appreciate being a second consideration, you know, but it is under a time restraint and so it's a, you know, that's just a recommendation. You guys will have to prove it and all, but I just think that we spoke up because this is a lot of revenue for our area. It could be a really, really good deal for our city.
Well, I think the city saying something is bigger than the people that spoke it up before this. And I think it will have more impact for the, for the commission to see, the city is saying, hey, we'd like to see this. I just feel like it has a little bit more impact and I think that there are ways that we could show our support without being, you know.
So basically, what's on the table here is going to be send a letter and support.
Just encouraging, yeah.
Okay.
It's not, it's not.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Nothing of the guidelines of saying, we disagree with your decision, we disagree with the way you're doing this, just say, we'd like to encourage and we'd like to do the helping, right?
I just didn't want to have some type of big resolution.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'll ask you before you say.
No, okay, no, that's fine, but I've received a few phone calls about this as well, so I just want to be sure that it's going to have an impact, what we have going forward in the one event.
Sure, sure. So I think then with drafting that letter, obviously having the mayor and you sit down together and drafting that, I think would be the appropriate way to handle that. You guys just write it in conjunction. I'd just like for them to understand the city would like the event to happen in general. I think it's a great event. I think it's great people. So that's all that I have to ask.
Yeah, whatever we can do to assist, we'll be like.
Do we need to make a motion? Is that, okay.
Sure.
I will make a motion that the city sends a letter of support written in conjunction with Craig Crossit and Larry Lee.
A second. Motion by Eaton, second by Aubrey. You guys have never checked into my English skills.
Maybe some peer review.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. I appreciate you guys taking the time to ask me this. City Administrator, report, please.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, you're here for me one last time this evening. Just a few brief updates on the city operations and some of the things we have going on, future upcoming items. It's a busy time in our growing community, so just to lead off here, one of the council people had mentioned the need of doing some more nature-oriented type things in our park system. There was a conversation about birdhouses, bird baths and tree planting, maybe some native grasses. And it just so happens that we've got a local Girl Scout troop that has had some conversation with our Public Works Director about doing this exact thing. So we might see them at a council meeting here in March where they want to come and have a conversation with you guys about that. And we're talking about the linear park area, but that's not to say we exclude other options as well. So, community center policy, all of us are anxiously awaiting the ribbon cutting and open house for the community center with the new space. We're going to make a couple of tweaks to the policy as far as how we're utilizing that. Staff is going to be meeting with stakeholders next week. We haven't set that meeting yet, so for those online listening, who may be a stakeholder, we'll be reaching out to you. We want to run this policy by you first and get a little feedback before we take it to the governing body. We anticipate bringing that to you March 4th, just in the nick of time before our first event, our second event, I should say, but after the ribbon cutting, before the Alliance Club take feed. Don't forget about the ribbon cutting, it's going to be right before the city council meeting, so it should be easy to remember. There'll be a come and go, 5:00 to 7:00 P M affair. We may have some refreshments and a couple of new trinkets that we've acquired. We're starting to run a little low on our koozies and pins and things of that nature. But we're just super excited to celebrate that space and that project, so. P E C was in the crowd the night and we expect to see him again at the March 4th meeting. If you remember, maybe a few months ago, we had a big old rain event. Every time we have these big rain events, folks come out and express concerns and the governing body directed staff to take some action about these concerns and we're doing exactly that. We're going to hire P E C to come in and look at some of the hotspots that have been identified by our civil engineer, Harland Porcher, as well as a couple of our city staff people. And they're going to identify some projects that will address these different hotspots. I think several of them are in Old Town, so we're going to bring that to you guys March 4th, get P E C to work on that so we can start making some improvements. The archet changeover, this one's got a little bit of detail to it, so listen closely. We're going to be switching over to Phase 2A traffic control. We do have message boards out there. If you've been driving around that area today, you would have seen those message boards giving the public at least a week's notice. The closures are going to be different than what they are today. We're not sure exactly what day they're going to make the changeover. That's always a tricky part of these guys. It's hard to nail them down to an exact day, so we're telling you next week. When they do that changeover, owners along Kellogg between 183rd and 199th will be receiving door-to-door communication from our city staff. We've already started some of that, so we want to go talk to those property owners face to face. If we show them this illustration, it's really complicated looking. If you're a non-engineer, it's tough to articulate, so having our city staff go out and talk to those property owners will help to illustrate what's going on. But essentially, westbound from 183rd on the south Frontage Road will be the only way to access Crown Drive during this phase. This phase is going to take probably about four weeks. Any eastbound traffic from 199th is going to be shut down, so trying to get to Crown Drive, you've got to come from 183rd there, so on the westbound lane, south side. Code of Meeting Procedure, we've been talking about that a little bit. Kathy Sexton, she's a local government consultant, members of the governing body met her a few months ago during our council orientation session. She's working on the new code of meeting procedure for us as well as our governing body manual. We want these policies in place. They're important to have, it's industry best practice. Once we get them done, we'll stick some pamphlets up there. Folks who have never come to a city council meeting before, they can grab one on their way in and say, well, this is, you know, how I had an interaction with the governing body member and a few other, you know, good rules to note. So it can reduce the bit of intimidation for folks who don't, you know, come to these meetings all the time if they got that pamphlet that kind of explains to them how things work. And also, the manual will kind of help the governing body through some of the different things like, how do I add an item to the agenda? Obviously, you're going to do that, but there's some other more tricky things that can sometimes come up. The governing body manual will discuss that. Don't expect you to memorize it, but it'll be a nice point of reference for you for future. North Park, one exciting project. We've got seven proposals from architectural firms interested in designing and managing the construction for the North Park project. The ad hoc committee will have its first public meeting tomorrow, that's Wednesday at 5:00. We're only going to be for about an hour. They're going to be tasked with ranking these seven proposals. We're going to turn them loose on those proposals tomorrow. They'll have two weeks to rank them. We've got a ranking sheet ready to go. The top firms will be selected for interview by the North Park Ad Hoc Committee. If it's a blowout score, we'll probably only interview one firm, but if it's a tight race, we've got two or three that score pretty high, we may interview two or three of these firms. Our recommendation to the city council is expected to occur at the first meeting in April, okay? And that meeting will bring you a recommendation for a firm, will bring you a contract, we'll have a refined scope of work, we'll have some costs thrown together for you. Matt and I will be working out the ways we're going to pay for this beautiful new park and we're really excited after seeing some of these concepts. Can't wait to share it with the community. 183rd Turn Lane's project, so Trant Systems let us know about a week ago that all design and engineering is complete. We are awaiting final project approval from KOD in the form of a construction agreement that will come before the city council. We were told to receive some more word from them within a month as far as when to anticipate the next part of the proceedings. Just like I said, with the 2024 roadway projects, be surprised and happy if that work happens this year. Sometimes these things just take some time, so. Third-party city engineering on call, RFP. So kind of the missing links to this, I talked, I told you about the stormwater work order from P E C. P E C is also going to be giving us a work order to take our water pressure model that Harlan and his colleague Logan have been working on up there. and his colleague Logan have been working on updating, taking that water pressure model and maybe giving us a few projects we can look at. Should be necessary to do some improvements for our water distribution system in response to our community's ample growth. Obviously, as we begin to develop the periphery of town, we're even further away from our tower and those kinds of things, so we wanna make sure that we are able to adequately serve water through these developments. This is very much so proactive, we don't anticipate having too many issues, so this will kind of help us skeletonize our capital improvement program from a water side of things. I don't anticipate we'll be doing any huge water projects as a result of this study within the next year or two. I think you're looking at more three- to five-year track, but we wanna have that document ready, because we were talking about big capital purchases, we're gonna forecast and start figuring out how we're gonna pay for them and those kinds of things. We talked a bit about Rural Water District for tonight. We're still continuing to work through the legalese on the wholesale water purchase agreement. We're getting pretty close, I think we've got, we've got some agreeable terms. And then the future territory release agreement, you know, that's gonna be a part of that discussion too, so at some point in the near future, we'll have some action items related to our partnership with the Rural Water District. Future agenda items coming up, Goddard Trails End, restricted covenant, and impact fee, adding sidewalks and curbs. I'm not gonna give you these in great detail, I'll start sending some emails out ahead of time. Petitions for Goddard City Center, additions one and two, the spill response plan, Bridger and Maple Resolution issuance, Rustic Creek Phase One bond ordinance, and the Tanganika PUD. I also have a bit of a community development update provided by our community development director. January was a busy month, and February has been no different. We've seen a lot of construction, a lot of value being added to the community with that new construction. So take a look at that chart there, and you can see the total valuation that's already been added just in the first six or seven weeks of 2024. So we're off to a hot start. A couple other things I want you to be aware of, because you might see it on social media and other advertising methods. We will be amping up the hiring for a couple of vacant positions, public works operators, at least one. We're gonna start marketing that on Facebook and a couple other professional association job boards that we utilize, as well as Indeed, which is the old classic, and then the Assistant City Administrator position. If you recall, several months ago, that position was left vacant with the changeover in leadership. Now that we've had a few months with a new person in, starting to figure out where some of the bottlenecks are, that was kind of a goal of mine, is I wanted to spend some time really figuring out where the needs are, so when we bring in a person to fill that role, we can pick a person, do skill sets aligned with those bottlenecks. When I say bottlenecks, I just mean the big projects and kind of the wicked problems that we deal with in local government, so. That is my update, and I appreciate you guys giving me some time. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, you got any body comments? Start with you, Aubrey. Change it up there a little bit.
Yeah, I like that.
Sorry, what's your good friend?
To those city staff, you guys are doing a phenomenal job. I'm noticing a lot of changes, you know? Appreciate you being at the helm, and there's a lot of great things that's happened this year that the public's not really seeing, but we see behind the scenes and understand what I'm really, really grateful for. So good job, guys. That's about it. I think we had some good conversations tonight, and sorry to be so angry about the dam jam thing, but it's really important, you know? So appreciate you guys considering that. See you later. I'm good.
I'm sure you're good. I'm sure you're skilled. I'm like extremely tired tonight, so this just got way too early. I can't wait for my meeting tomorrow night about North Park meeting, so I'm, yeah, I'm looking forward to it. And we came up with some really good ideas on the phone the other day, but I'm not gonna share with you yet, so we'll wait till our next meeting. So that's about it. Got a list.
First, I'm not gonna forget, I got you. Neighbors United sneaks up on us so quickly every year, and it is right around the corner, so sign up for both projects and teams are open, so if you know of somebody in our community that could use an extra helping hand, we've got plenty of people who would love to give that, so reach out to Angie at the Chamber. I'm gonna guess there's probably a link to your website, because you're good at this stuff. Go to the Goddard Chamber website, and you can sign up for projects that you know need to happen, or you can also just sign up and join the team, put together a team and help out. I got to help with a group of teenage boys last year that I had never met before, and that was an experience, but I really enjoyed it, but those boys had a lot of energy, so I would encourage you all to get involved in that. Speaking of things, registration is open for Goddard Main Street Market, we'll be back very quickly as well, so registration is now open. Looking forward to see that. I'm not gonna give too much information, because I don't know how much she wants me to give, but we had a new business leave in this last weekend and a little bit today, and I'm super excited for that. Right down Main Street, we love to see new businesses, and it is locally owned and operated by somebody who grew up in our school system, so it's so cool to see them getting to chase their dreams right on Main Street, and I look forward to seeing her at some of those events. Craig, you and I had a conversation, I called Craig last week, 'cause I was at the park with my daughter, and told him to walk over to the park, so I want to sit down and look at, potentially put in an autism awareness slash sensory type section at Linear Park. I think we have a lot of people in our community that have sensory issues that, so Linear Park is very loud, and that's awesome, because I love to see all those kids playing, but I'd love to see us create a space specifically designed for individuals in our community with those sensory issues, so if that is okay with you guys, I would love to meet and specifically meet for that and kind of talk about some ideas that I have. And then lastly, I wanted to apologize, if you see me pull out my phone, my wife is very pregnant right now, and I have a special vibration that it does so that I know it's her texting me, so if I whip it out, I'm making sure she's okay. Tonight, she was just trapped in the bathroom by a spider and blew up my phone about the spider, so she's fine. There is a new baby coming yet, but over the next few meetings, if you see me pull out my phone, I promise I'm not trying to be disrespectful, I'm just anticipating a daughter soon, so if I feel that it is her texting me, I will pull it out just to make sure she's okay, so that's all I have for you. Krista.
I would like to welcome Jim to the planning commission. I think that that is, we're gonna be very, very blessed to have him serve in our community, and it's good to meet you, Tina. Thank you for joining this team, and I appreciate all of the efforts you all are making. It's kind of making it easier for us, and I just really appreciate you, so.
Is there a colored knife that we're supposed to be? We have to vote this seventh grade junior high call before the knife in the meeting, and we're gonna wear a call. I never get that. That's almost how it is. It's hard, man.
We can create a calendar that indicates what color of polo the polo wears.
First meeting of the month, blue, second meeting of the month, white.
There you go.
Yeah, I thought it was.
I would propose you don't do that.
All right, we'll save that for another time. Just a couple of quick comments. One of the things that Craig has been leading us in is getting reconnected and involved in these different area groups, REAP, which is the Regional Economic Area Partnership. We attended our first meeting. WOMP, which I probably even said it, but the Transportation Policy Board, went to their first meeting. I think there's a lot of things that are being done within the county, within those organizations, and I think hopefully we'll start reaping some benefits for the timing of that, so I appreciate Craig's leadership in that. That, see y'all in the blue shirts. I want to take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Krista motions. Aubrey Sexton, I've been using this new little lifting card down. Major.